All right.
Back in the saddle. All right, item fifteen is the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda. Few items there.
Any items to be discussed, pulled, modified?
I didn't sign.
Having none on the entertaining motion that we approve the Resolution and Agreement Consent Agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Jared?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shoroma?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ketchin?
Yes.
All right. Department updates.
Tired everybody now. Oh, Josh is here.
Everybody else run.
They don't know what five minutes is.
So just to touch base on the public comment from earlier, we did have seven from the Joel Volunteer Fire Department resigned. We had one retirement from Otis, and then we had three resignations from Sun Country. So we are actively recruiting. We have been assessing the active versus inactive and trying to move people that aren't responding over to the inactive list so we can get a more accurate count of total number of true volunteers that we have that are active in the county. We're working to get that out. We're working on recruitment really heavily, trying to get more volunteers. And we did make a selection for the firefighter position in Loving, so hopefully in the next two weeks that person's on board, getting their quick training to get familiar with the area down there, and we'll be moving forward from there. So any other questions or comments?
With six gone from Joel, all of a sudden, is there going to be adequate manpower?
So we've been struggling in that district for a couple of months now, well, about the last year, with getting enough response. That's why we moved to the division tone. So we're actually, whenever Joel has a call, we're getting Happy Valley, Joel, and Queen, which the Queen Chief actually lives close to the Joel district, so he responds and helps. I live in that area. David lives in that area, so we're responding as well to try to cover those calls. We are working with some of the industry, though, to do some block parties, is what we're going to call them, to actually take the trucks out. The companies will provide the food and the grills, and we'll go out in the actual neighborhoods and get, try to get the people from their house, basically. Not invite them necessarily to the station, make them travel to us. We're going to go to them. So that's one of our big pushes that we're going to make for recruitment. And we're hurting in every fire district, honestly, because everybody has a job. They've got families, they've got things to do. So we do our best to backfill it. We do have really good response with what we do have of active members, so that is a bless.
Good to have it, Josh. What are qualifications on the guy going to Loving?
He's been a volunteer with us for, I want to say, four years. He's done all of his local training. We just need to get him nationally certified so that he's at that training standard.
Does he have any EMT training?
He's not yet, but he's going to take the EMT course with the city of Carlsbad that starts next month. So he should be EMT certified within the next, I think... Jared, did they say three months? Eight weeks, yes. So in two months, he'll have his EMT license. And he is a go-getter. He's been very good as a volunteer for us. He's actually from up in Artesia, so.
So this is the changes, and I know that was one of the comments that was made in the public comments, but the changes to the divisions have really become the backstop for having responders available during the day to roll from those division locations with equipment. And then the volunteers or from the other districts in that division to supplement that need. So I fully believe the changes that we've implemented are taking the county the right direction in terms of response capabilities and the steps necessary that would improve the ISO ratings for all of those areas which are a benefit to the citizens and their fire insurance policies. So I'm sorry that some individuals feel like they can't abide by those changes. But I think the changes were necessary and they put us in the right position.
Well, and these were the changes that we were talking about that would reduce our liability, reduce our insurance cost. They would adhere to training, things along those lines, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And that's the biggest thing, is the liability that we've had for a long time and will continue to have. You know, if you send an untrained person out to something and they act inappropriately, falsely with the way the state is now, that's two hundred dollars on the county.
So you cut our I S rating.
So, yes.
To reduce the insurance cost of the constituents.
Yep.
And part of those changes you just approved in the Resolution and Agreement Consent portion was the DTRS system changes to, you know, we're now leveraging the state, or we will be leveraging the state tower communication network system and complementing that without to improve the overall radio coverage. The Motorola deal that we're still, or that we're in the process of implementing, again, that strengthens and broadens the communication capability. State's excited to be involved. You know, we have Mr. Rohrbacher here in case there are any questions on that agreement. But this is the continued progression for the overall improvement of fire and rescue services in Eddie County. And they're great strides, and we'll see that those investments here coming forward, so.
We're just trying to be transparent with the commission and the community of what is truly happening. We don't want to come in here and be like, you know, you're going to have thirty people. This is what I have. I need more people. That's how the volunteer fire service started. It used to be the whole community was part of the fire department. Everybody came out to help their neighbor. That's what we're trying to get back in place here, because honestly, the taxpayers in the county can't afford a fully career fire department. You'd be looking at thirty-eight to forty million dollars without overtime, so.
Getting back to the guy going down to Loving, when he finishes his EMT training and certification, he will be available to respond to industrial and traffic accidents south of Loving, right?
Yes, sir. Five days a week is...
Five days a week?
Yeah. We're going to run an assessment on that five days and see how much it improves things. And then also, while we're doing that, we're looking at the county as a whole to see how much of an asset it is. The same thing in Artesia right now. They're down over a whole shift of people. So there's one shift where our guys are actually supplementing. You know, we're trying to help Chief Hope out up there as well, and I think they're starting to get their wages more competitive to give them a chance to maintain people, so.
Well, let me ask you this question. You say five days a week. Does that five days a week have to run Monday through Friday? Or could it run, you know?
It could do Wednesday to Sunday.
Saturday through Saturday through Wednesday?
Yeah.
So that we have somebody available on weekends, which would be more of a danger period to me.
Well, and that's what we're assessing. We're looking at all the reports and how many calls we have per day, when our height and time is, you know, if it's, let's say it's twelve to eight o'clock at night, that's going to be the shift, because that's when we see the spike in the calls. And we're evaluating that whole area, and we've even discussed in the past trying to get staffing to go out to like 128 and 31, stage a truck there from five in the morning till seven A.M., because we know there's an influx of traffic, and we have a higher rate of accidents Monday through Friday in that area. So we've evaluated that as well, instead of staying in the station or having the volunteers at home. Hey, if you're available, sign up. Let's go out and let's be more proactive instead of reactive, so.
Very good thoughts.
Are there any benefits or do volunteer fighters get paid wages?
So right now, we don't have any. We did apply for a state fire grant to try to gain some money. We're just, and there are a lot of different systems throughout the country and also throughout the state. But whenever we start getting into that, you know, it starts to affect finance. And do we have to get an extra person in finance just to run this? And so we're trying to be, we're trying to give them something, but we've got to figure out the right steps and the right way to get that back to them. So hopefully, if we get this grant, that'll give us a good little test trial to see how it goes. And then obviously, if it goes good and we see an increase in volunteerism, then I'm going to come to the commission and say, hey, you know, can we budget some money to put towards those projects? But we want to be cost efficient for the citizens. And I mean, we're all taxpayers at the end of the day, so we all got to be accountable for ourselves as well, so.
Thanks, Josh.
Appreciate y'all. If you have any questions, give me a call anytime.
Other department updates? That would be a resounding no then. Legislative update.
Morning again, everyone. Give you a quick rundown on some of the things that have been going on. As far as interim committee meetings, we had the Revenue Stabilization Tax Policy Committee met last week. It's a very interesting information brought up there to kind of tell you where LFC is and their evaluations of the budget this year. They have looked at fiscal year twenty-one, average of forty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents on a barrel of oil. Of course, you know, we saw some downturns. We've seen some upturns, but that's kind of the rule of thumb they're using. I thought something interesting that I wanted to pass on to you, folks, this morning, give you a little bit of perspective of where we are and what we deal with each day. One of the representatives came up with an analogy on oil and gas, which I find quite interesting. I had to write it down. They stated that it's, now he considers that oil and gas are renewable, renewable, because the need will run out before the resource runs out because of it being replaced by renewable sources of energy. Had a hard time getting my arms around that. Had to write it down. So anyway, let me read that again. So that shows you some of the perspectives that we find as challenges as Commissioner Carlson and as Wes try to go out and present the Arrowhead Study. The good part about it all is, is that because of this so-called perceived renewable resource that we may have in the future, we have a one, they're projecting a one point four billion dollar surplus in the state. That's a lot of money.
You say billion?
One point four billion projected.
I heard that that was created, it was on the news the other night, that the people at Santa Fe said that that one point four billion dollar projected surplus was going to come from the distributions and stuff from the government.
Part of that is true.
I don't know how that would be true, because it's supposed to replace lost income. So doesn't that just keep you to ground level?
It does. It does.
I don't know how that creates surplus.
And that's kind of the same perception we saw when we talked about how does a, like the public education system and not dipping into their reserves. They dipped into the reserves, and they didn't apply in time for a budget, for a grant. So we really didn't lose any money because we still had the money that we put there. So those are the, that's the creative, the creative way of looking at things, Commissioner Carlson. And I understand, exactly, exactly. So anyway, to kind of step into it a little bit further, and Al will highlight on this. We know there's a lot of money there, and there's going to be a lot of money at this session, and we're going to do our best to get all of it that we can. And so I'll let Al talk about that later. One of the other things I know that we're very passionate about is Citizens Redistricting Committee. They're going to start their new meetings on September the sixteenth. There'll be a concept meeting, a concept meeting on September sixteenth, which will describe the direction in which their draft is going as far as looking at the different types of redistricting. On October the fifth, they will have a meeting in Roswell. They'll have nine meetings throughout the state through October the eighth. And then on October the fifteenth, they will have a meeting that they'll adopt the maps and what they'll recommend to the legislature from all the information that they have compiled through their public process that the Citizens Redistricting Committee has gone through over the last several months. There's a lot of rumors already starting out there, and I'm going to emphasize rumors about what that redistricting process will look like. And one of the biggest rumors we see right now is that the CD two boundaries will change, will potentially change, which would affect Congresswoman Harold's district. There are so many rumors out there right now that there's even creating more rumors that folks are already talking about putting their name in the hat to potentially run against her. So film at eleven. We'll see how all that washes out when the redistricting is done. But there's also that rumor floating around out there as recently as this morning to let you know. A lot of other things are going on with more rumors about different Republicans throwing their hat in the ring for the gubernatorial race. So we all know it's going to be an interesting year in the next few months as far as the election, the legislature, the redistricting, and things like that. I'm having lunch today with Representative Townsend, floor minority leader. Townsend today at noon to talk about a lot of these issues and how we think we can go forward on some of these. Lots of different committee meetings, as I told you before. Water, Natural Resources interim committees meeting today. Indian Affairs meets on Thursday and Friday. Investments and pensions also on Thursday and Friday, and so on and so on and so on each week. Trying to track and stay with all of these and stay in contact with our legislative representatives and others that are on those committees to see what we might, can do, or if there's anything we need to do. I think that's more important, things we need to do on some of these, and I, so far, budget's a big deal. And we affect that budget very much, as you well know. Any questions?
I have a quick question, and it's not on what you've done. It's more towards the governor. With everybody coming into the state, whether it be from the border, from Afghanistan, it really doesn't matter, and kind of touching our county, whether it be in the county, or I know Otero County is getting a huge group of folks that are going to be staying at Holloman, different things like that. Has our government, our governor said anything on it? I haven't found anything, and this is a genuine question. I'm not trying to be snarky. I mean, where does she stand on that? Is she okay with the, because I mean, CD two is one of the districts that has had a huge influx of immigrants being put in that district. Is she okay with that? Does she have a plan? Is she a plan to help us as counties that are dealing with it, or anything?
Not heard anything in any interim committee or from the governor about that. The only thing that we heard early on was she was supportive of some of this. But it's, as far as that goes, there's not been anything mentioned in the committees, and I've tried to make most of them, about any of that, because as we talk about the different services in these different disciplines of these interim committees, that has not been mentioned. And yes, I've seen the same thing, that Holloman's getting quite a few folks there right now.
I know Dona Anna, I mean, so a lot of these counties are, Dona Anna doesn't touch us, but Otero does, and a lot touch us. And I'm just, I'd really like to know what the plan is to...
They're obviously, they're obviously at some point in time going to have an impact on our services. So those are things that we have to be fully aware of, and I know the commission has been, and been working on that as far as our Eddie County.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Item number eighteen, tribal request consent agenda.
Any questions on your request consent agenda? Having none on the entertaining motion to approve tribal request consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Jared?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shoroma?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ketchin?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. We don't have any emergency business today. And I don't see any legislators here. Any elected officials like to address the commission? Seen none. County manager's comments. Been a busy several weeks. Lots of activity, fires popping up, putting fires out. But I guess two things I'd like to point out. One, I'll just show you this graphic. That bar on the far left is the August number of positive cases in COVID and the number of tests taken. You can see they outpace anything that we experienced in 2020 and early 2021. Is what it is, right? The county has continued to help support vaccination clinics. We reopened the Walter Gerald Center in mid-August, and we've done over seven hundred vaccinations. The Department of Health, the local Department of Health and their staff. I think they've been supported by the National Guard and some local staff. But we've done another seven hundred vaccinations in those few weeks. We didn't have a clinic yesterday because of the holiday. We'll have another one on Friday, and I think we'll continue through September to try and provide those vaccinations to people who are desirous to have a vaccination. But resources are stretched, right? And so it continues to be a challenge in our community. So anything we can do to help prevent that, help deter that, help stop that, we need to be conscious of. Wes and Ernie have been very active, and I'm sure Commissioner Carlson will talk a little bit about their visit. One of the things, and as Jerry mentioned, the Legislative Finance Committee issued their Consent Estimate Report the end of August. That's where the one point four billion dollar surplus, and it was, I actually referred to as new money. There's no new money. Anyway, anyway. Having said all of that, we want to make sure that we're getting the word out and the message out that if there's money, Eddie County would like to be eligible for some of that money. And so we put together with Jerry and Wes and Roberta and Jason, a little one pager front and back. The backside, you can't really see it. I'll pass it around, and if you want copies, I'll send it to you. But it shows all of the monies that the county has invested in the last three years, right? Local being the county, state, or state and local, kind of combined, and federal. Local funding in the last three years, I should have brought my Walmart glasses, but I think, is that thirty-four or forty-four thousand dollars? Thirty-four point six, all right. In the state, sixteen point five, federal, one point six. And that excludes the FEMA. I got the FEMA monies down there. And then, you know, so we spent a lot of money here on, and these are principally road projects. It lists all the projects that were voted. But we put the money to work quickly. We put it to work effectively, and we get results. We've had ten million dollars where we've worked with the state and in DOT to implement that. So this one pager talks about Eddie County. We've been fortunate to have the monies we've got. We've done multiple projects. You know, there are twenty-odd projects listed on the back of this sheet. And so the money that is generated for the state that comes from Eddie County, this was taken from their report. The current Legislative Finance Committee Consensus Estimate Report projects a forty-one percent increase in several stacks in federal royalty collections from a total of one point five seven billion in fiscal year twenty-one to two point two one billion dollars in fiscal year twenty-two. Roughly forty percent of those revenues are generated from Eddie County. So we have an inventory of projects that we want to continue to work on. And it's not hard to get to a hundred million dollars worth of inventory of projects. But we're going to use this one pager and start talking to, or not start, but continue to engage with legislators around the state to help them, you know, on the campaign that Red Rocket spoke about. Helping them understand, if they've got money to invest, here's a place that you can invest it that will return dividends to the state by having that money invested here. So we continue to work on this, creating a positive awareness about Eddie County. I have a study here, and I shared a little bit with, and I still owe you this presentation, Commissioner Bird, but we've been working with the company S360 to identify the right message about supporting things in Eddie County, not just the extractive industries, but rural tourism and many other things. High-paying jobs down here, quality community, there's a number of things that are very positive about Eddie County. The demographics that are, they, S360 conducted a poll survey outside of southeast New Mexico. They wanted eight hundred respondents to have a statistically significant population for that survey. So they polled a couple thousand people and got their eight hundred in about a week. And the demographics in that were really exciting and important. A lot of people affiliated with the democratic attributes. We had quite a good age range. We had quite a good, you know, demographic, male and female. But the main message was, with a little bit of information, they went from somewhat positive, or somewhat favorable to very favorable. And that's the emphasis that we want to focus on, is helping reinforce that message with the constituents or letting the legislators know that this is how the constituents see southeast New Mexico and Eddie County and work on their viewpoints about southeast New Mexico and Eddie County. So we're continuing on multiple fronts to try and improve or have people recognize the appropriate vision and value of what Eddie County is and what it does within the state of New Mexico. So lots happening in that space and place. I think I'll leave it right there. Any questions or feedback that the commission has, I'm happy to share and respond to.
I want to thank the county again for their conservative budgeting. It's nice to hear that we have money. And I really like that we're sending the message of truth and trying to educate people on what's happening down here. It's hard to know that we are perceived in a particular way that is not reflective of what happens down here. So I really support that message of just trying to find some balance, trying to welcome people to come and see what we have to offer in a non-threatening way. So I'm very pleased with the work that Ernie and Wes have been doing and everybody Red Rocket, getting this fact-based information out there. I also just want to take a minute to just encourage people to, I want to focus on health, not just vaccines and COVID and this and that, but health comes from within. And encouraging people to, you know, make your yearly appointments with your doctors, get your screenings done, take your vitamins, you know, drink your water, basic things of health, you know, mind health as well as physical health, exercises can be very impactful. And I think in order for us to move forward with COVID as a society, I think this is exposed to unhealth of America in so many ways. And I think that if we shift the focus on working internally to fight infection, to prevent disease, that's what's really going to move us forward, you know, with this for years to come. So I'm always happy to talk health to anybody that will listen to me, provide pointers, or, you know, what I know to be true about health-related activities. So I just want to kind of put that out there, and people can perceive that as they wish. Thank you.
I'll keep on very, very short, because I know we're running long. But talking about CD two and Congresswoman Harold, I think it's so important for us all to understand to have a balance, because this state is completely... to have a balance, because this state is completely unbalanced, right? We've been controlled by the Democratic Party for 100 years, right? So, if we lose another, like we were, and you're completely unbalanced, it's hard to have truth. No matter if it's all Republican Party or not Democratic Party, you lose bounds, because I'm right, Democrats are wrong, right? I mean, that's a perception, but Democrats might say, hey, we're right, you're wrong. I get it. But the conversations are broke down. So, with CD2, the one thing I'd like to compliment Congresswoman Harold, and I was able to talk to Congressman Westerman, I don't know, it was a couple weeks ago, he was down here in Chavas County, I think that came through Eddie County. She's done an amazing job of bringing Congress folks from New York, Minnesota, Texas, which is great, they get it, Arkansas, I mean, I've been able to meet with a number of them from all over the country that really want to understand oil and gas. They wanna understand, hey, here's what we hear, let us see it. She's taken them to rigs. We're getting to sit down and talk about the Arrowhead Study. The Arrowhead Study was a huge discussion in this last meeting we had, which was good, because we had a lot of independent oil companies there that were able to feed into it, and these Congress folks are getting truth, right? They're hearing it, they're seeing it, and they're understanding it. And I think if we continue to just be one-sided, truth disappears. And I love what you said, because it's absolutely correct. We're not always right, Democrats aren't always right, but there's somewhere in the middle that there's truth, and, man, these districts are incredibly important, and I wish people would really pay attention to that, because I do appreciate what she has done in trying to bring truth to the border, bring truth to the, just help us understand what's happening and let us base a decision on facts and not what we're seeing in the news, because the news is obviously, there's nothing true in the news anymore, unfortunately. It's really done a disservice to our country. So, just wanted to give, give a shout out and an appreciation to, to the Congresswoman whom is doing an amazing job bringing folks down here. It was amazing to hear that our two senators, who, I'm trying to think of a good word proper, because I don't wanna call them a waste of space, because I think that's rude, but if you can help fill in the blank, fill in something else, because I kinda feel that they're a waste of space. So, they're not even coming down to have the discussion, they're seeing that, how much of the oil and gas affects our budget, and yet there, they were quiet when Biden put out his executive order. Nothing was said from our senators, nothing from the rest of the delegation, wouldn't even show up to the meetings to have the discussion. And New Mexico will get crushed if oil and gas disappears. We can no longer fund schools, we can no longer fund a lot of the stuff that we have, and the rest of our congressional delegation didn't even show up. Deb Hollin doesn't even show up to these things to have the discussion, to make sure that the people that they're supposed to represent can sustain. There is no plan. And I think it's a disservice, and people need to start paying attention to that. Who's showing up to these meetings? Whether you agree with it or not, show up and have a discussion, show up and try to understand it. And our senators are not. And I'm sad to see it, I'm sad to see that they're quiet on the immigration right now, because it's a huge thing that's impacting New Mexico. Whether you agree with it or not, it doesn't matter. Show up and have a discussion, and they've yet to do it. And I didn't mean to get frustrated, but I just am. It's very frustrating to see a group in Washington that could care less and a group in Santa Fe that doesn't seem to care. It wasn't a baiting question, I really wanted to know, where's the governor? Where is she? This is impacting the state that you represent, it's about our health, right? That's why we've shut this state down for two years almost, because we're protecting the health, and yet we're importing it. 20 to 30% supposedly are infected with COVID, and we're dumping them in our communities. Where is she? It's not about your health, folks. It's time to start asking these questions, and let's have them show up, help us understand. That's all we're asking. I might not agree with your stance, but let's have a real discussion and help me understand why. And it's just not gonna happen. And it's disappointing, and we should expect more from everyone that's elected, whether it be a city council, which I listened to all city councils the other day, or the President of the United States. We need to show up, we're elected to do the representation, and when we don't even show up and we're mute on things that are completely moving the state one way or the other, whether you agree with it or not. I think everyone can agree, this is a huge impact on the state, and we're not hearing anything from anyone. One representative, one congressional representative actually asking questions about the border, about oil and gas, about the executive orders. That's why she's bringing all these folks here, it's because of the executive order. How does that affect New Mexico? What has that done to New Mexico? Never met Ben Ray, I've been to Washington a number of times, he never has time, whether he's a congressman, I haven't been there since he's been a senator, he's never met with a delegation from this side of the state that I've been a part of. And the one time, Heinrich, when he wasn't walking his dog, and that's a true story, he was walking his dog, he didn't have time to meet with us, he did meet with us once. That's it? That's who's representing New Mexico, they don't have time. And it's time we start asking folks to have time to help us fix these problems, because us at the local level, it's becoming hard to continue to figure out how to fit these things in when we're just getting slammed on every level, and it's not right. And I'm sorry, I took no time, and I wanted to, so, everything else is great, glad the kids are getting to play. Sorry, cause bad game got canceled because of COVID, I really am, I hate to see that, but hopefully they'll get to play this week.
Next, Jerry.
One of the things, as we talked about, Wes and I were in Valencia County last week, presenting to the Valencia County Commission, and we got a really good response from them. As a matter of fact, we had one of the commissioners follow us out, talking about how he wanted to be, come down here, and I offered to make sure that we would take him on a tour of the oil field, possibly be able to look at a rig and have it explained to him and all those things. And, and the other thing I was telling them about is how we need to support oil and gas because it's not that far for those oil and gas companies to move over to Texas. I'm not sure that they understand just how close that is and, and how the formation is also south of New Mexico as well it is north of the Mexico state line. One of the things that I wanted to make sure that they understood is that, that the oil and gas revenues that all the communities in the state of New Mexico is enjoying is, comes at a cost. And right now, the communities and local governments of Southeast New Mexico is picking up that cost for the whole state, and that's just not a fair situation. And if, if you're gonna enjoy that revenue from oil and gas, then you need to help us pay for those revenues. And so, that's been one of the messages that I've been taking. And so, we wanna continue to take our Arrowhead Study. I think it does some good. We get great conversations from all the elected officials and people that are in the audience from doing this presentation, so I think it's worthwhile. And so, I'm willing to continue to do that as long as we can find places that'll listen to us. The other thing that I just wanted to make sure we highlight, since Commissioner Henry's here today, is that we did have one of the local athletes that's playing professional ball that was in the All-Stars this year, just wanted to...
I noticed that. He did good, too.
Yes, yeah. The other thing is just going to do a speech, I know y'all get tired of listening to me, but I'm gonna do another speech for the 9/11 ceremony this Saturday out at the Civic Center, and it starts at 12 o'clock at noon. And so, if there's anybody that would like, I'd appreciate y'all coming to listen to me so I have some audience, and not everybody cuts and runs when I start talking. So, but anyway, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I got a, I got a little preview of the commissioner's remarks, and I think you should, you should, the 9/11 recognition at the event center this Saturday is a great thing, but you should definitely hear Commissioner Carlson deliver that message if you have the opportunity, I think. You'd be very pleased, and I think it represents the county very, very well, so...
Thank you.
But 20 years is, lots happened in 20 years, some things haven't changed, but...
Never forget.
I'd just like to add a little bit to what John had to say. That's hard act to follow, but I agree with every word you said, all of them, it's well done. The, the, all of the people being seized down at the border with the Supreme Court decision that says the Trump-era protocol that they waited in Mexico, they have said that that is supposed to start happening. I don't know for sure whether that was actually passed by Congress. I'm real curious to see when they're gonna start following that Supreme Court decision, and I'm not hearing a peep out of the governor or anybody else about it, one way or the other. That may save, solve our problem with some of the target problems we've got around here. Hopefully, I would, I'd like to get some info on that from somebody. If it's not being followed, why not? And I'll, I'll do what that is.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. I probably should've cleared my following statement to Wes before we speak, but Wes is his son, took a bad car accident last week, and as we're, as we're discussing, he's, he's okay, I guess, fortunately. And as we're discussing the problems that we have on the border, I felt that only appropriate that we bring that up, because the man that, that hit Wes's son over by Carazosso, the vehicle was full of fentanyl, methan, and fetamines, no doubt probably many of those originated on the southern border, given the location there. And so, things have come really, really close to home, we're glad that the, we appreciate the good Lord protecting Cash and his, all of his travels, he travels a lot. And six inches, the car was head-on, and six inches further, further to the left, this is a completely different conversation. So, if you think that, if you think that securing the southern border doesn't affect the people that we know and love exactly, you are very, very, very mistaken. It is, that brought it a lot closer to home to me. We can all be happy and blissful in our ignorance, but Cash's accident is a, should be a wake-up call for all of us to action, so. One other, one other thing, considering that, that I guess Commissioner Henry is in District 1, I felt it only appropriate that we, that we give him a token, you know, designating the numerical value of his district. Just thought that he would, he would maybe enjoy wearing this a little bit, since he came in blue today anyway, probably in anticipation for something like this, so I figure we would, we'd present that with love to Commissioner Henry.
I still have it, in fact, I was back in my house before the game, and I thought, I'm gonna leave this out, because we're gonna win this year, I'm gonna give it back. Thank you.
Now you've got two to wear out.
That's awesome, appreciate it. Thanks for your support.
You're welcome. So, I have no further comments. Do we have any further comments around? Good to go. entertain a motion that we go into executive session to discuss a couple of items of threatening penny litigation to return, when, cash, or how?
15 minutes?
Yeah, 11:15.
11:15?
That's 25 minutes.
Is that what you want?
11:10.
11:10.
Okay.
To return 11:10, so moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Beard.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cordova.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.